Tuesday, 17th, 2014, meeting in the Corrine Township. It is now open for business. Could we all please stand and be pledged to business?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We ask that everybody would please sign off their self-convince. We have a roll call, please.
Mrs. Smith? Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Teming? Mr. Trokowski?
Here.
Mr. Westphal?
Here. Okay, next on your agenda is the approval of minutes of the May 22 meeting. Are there any additions or directions to the minutes?
I want to make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
It's been moved and accepted, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the minutes of the May 22, 2014, meeting. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Abodies. Motion carried. Next on your agenda is the public address section, and that's for anybody who's in the audience who would like to address the commission for anything that is not on the agenda. Okay. I forgot to read something. The zoning commission meets on the third Wednesday each month at the 7:00 PM in the Corrine Township Trustee's Chamber, 4200 Springdale Road, Corrine Township, 045251. Our procedures are as follows, specified in our procedures are specified in Section 3.2.2, roles and powers of the Corrine Township zoning resolution. We hear zoning change requests, recommend either approval or non-approval before member of the trustees or the legislative body for the township. This process is governed by the law of the code. Tonight on the agenda, we have a final development plan. The way a final development plan works is zoning staff will make a presentation of the request. The applicant may also make a presentation of the request. The zoning commission will have a discussion followed by a motion to approve or deny the request, and a roll call vote. We also have a public hearing. Public hearing, the zoning staff will make a presentation of the request. The applicant may or may also make a presentation of the request. The meeting is then open for public comment. Three to five minutes, no redundancy, please. Then closed for public im- then closed. The following, this is followed by a discussion among the commission members. The zoning commission will have a motion to approve or deny the request. Commission will then have a roll call vote. This decision will be sent to the board of trustees. Okay, next on the agenda is a final development plan for case DA 2013-05, BWW Shops of Stone Creek, a minor amendment to the final develop- development plan. The staff have a presentation.
I do. Good evening, commissioners. So, we have two items on the agenda this evening. The first one is a case that we're all, at this point, familiar with. This is the BWW Buffalo Wild Wings and Shops of Stone Creek Development at Stone Creek Town Center. This case has been before us a number of times in the past, July of last year, September of last year, December of last year, and there's a minor modification being requested this evening. The plan, let me get to, okay, so the plan that was approved in December of 13 had the Buffalo Wild Wings facing the road. It had four shops in the Shops of Stone Creek, and it had, well, those are the, those are the big changes. So, the new proposal rotates the Buffalo Wild Wings 90 degrees counterclockwise, so that the entrance to the building is now facing the Shops of Stone Creek building. It also eliminates two of the users in the Shops of Stone Creek building. Those two users were slated as restaurant users, which has a high demand for parking. So, with the changes in the use in this building, there, the parking requirements were lessened, and because of that, there is, there is less parking in the, in the new plan. So, if we look, sort of side-by-side comparison here, major changes to the site as a result of the reorientation of the building and the elimination of two uses in the, in the Shops of Stone Creek building, we get rid of one row of parking on the west side of the site. We move the, we move the dumpster, which was located on the north portion of the site, and now the dumpster is located back, the west, the northwest corner. With the elimination of the, of the two uses in the Shops of Stone Creek building, we also get rid of parking in the northeast corner of the, of the site, and the dumpster enclosure gets smaller because there's now only two users. So, those are the, the major changes. In my, in my conversations with the applicant, I had explained that the architectural design standards for the township include a cornice treatment on new buildings, and so they did include a cornice treatment. In my staff report, I said, as a, that this be conditioned, that the approval be conditioned on the inclusion of this cornice treatment, and it now has been presented, so that, that condition can be stricken. So, you know, with those two changes, with those few changes, rather, I recommend approval of the minor modification. The one condition that I have, as I, as I looked at this, was now we have a service door that faces Stone Creek Boulevard, and I was, I was concerned about the visual, sort of aesthetic, impact. You know, obviously, my, from my point of view, I would prefer to see the building oriented towards the street. We can ask the applicant what drove these changes, but, you know, if, if this is absolutely necessary, then I would say, to mitigate any negative aesthetic impacts, we, we absolutely need to make sure that the landscaping is very dense around that service entrance. So, my recommendation is approval with, with conditions.
Does the applicant have a presentation?
Good evening. My name is Scott Huber. I'm the site civil engineer, 3377 Compton Road, Suite 120, 45251. I just want to first start off by apologizing to the committee here and to the staff just for the numerous revisions that we've made over the past year on this project. I know it's taken a lot of your time, it's taken a lot of my time, but I think we're honed in now on exactly where we need to be with the building, where we need to be with the site. The primary reason that we have to rotate this building, like you see here in this minor revision, is we're still battling the dirt issues out there. There are still, still very bad soil conditions, and it's all on the, on the slope on the north side there going down to the creek, so it was imperative that we had to bring the BW3 building as close to Stone Creek as we could, just to try to, you know, minimize the foundation impacts that we're, we're going to need to do on that building. We still need to do more than conventional foundations on these buildings, and I think even tomorrow, you're going to see the beginnings of the slope modification. We've had some geotechnical engineers out there, and they've got a plan together to stabilize this slope, and what you're going to see, starting tomorrow, I believe, is we're going to actually excavate this entire slope and replace it with compacted fill and geo-grid, just to get the stability that the geotechnical engineer feels that he needs to, you know, not impact the building, or to have as factor of safety where he needs it to be for the building. So, you know, the applicant and myself, we're asking for approval of this, just so we can, we can, you know, deal with these, with these dirt conditions. Along with moving the building, with the BW3 building, there was also some finalizations on the Shops building with the tenants. So, if you saw on your packet, there was actually new submittals for the elevations for the Shops building, and that's because the tenants are now nailed down. I'm fairly certain on the Shops, the tenants are nailed down. This is Mike Brandy from Brandy Corp. here, he's the developer. So, we made the, we made a new submittal here. We tried to get this all, you know, rolled into one package here. We were going to move the BW3 building, resubmit the new elevations for the Shops building, and kind of roll this all into one, one hearing and one minor amendment. We've also, you know, kind of modified the parking layout. If you remember, the last time we were here, there was some discussion about the 16 and a half foot spaces and things like that. If you look on the site plan, now all of the 16 and a half foot spaces are on the perimeter where they're, they can overhang the curb, and all of the interior spaces are now 19 feet. So, that meets the code, and I think it takes care of some of the issues we were having, we were discussing last time. The landscaping plan, I'm assuming, is still the quality that Mr. Mills is, is expecting. It's the same consultant. They did have to modify it with this new layout, but I'm assuming that that's all agreeable, and we're still at the same caliber that we were the last couple of times. The only other revision that you may note is on the lighting plan. Last time, I think we asked for a variance, we were slightly over on our average foot candles. We made a revision to the lighting plan to actually get under that, and we've actually met code this time, and we're not asking for any variances on the lighting plan. So, with that, I can hope to answer any questions for you. Mr. Brandy is also here, and we'd certainly appreciate an approval, and, and I believe this is the, the last time that we'll be in front of you. Thank you.
Mrs. Smith?
Sure.
And the sewage, how does that go to address?
For storm sewer or for sanitary sewer? There are, there is an existing sanitary sewer lateral that's already under Stone Creek Boulevard that the Shops, the Shops building is going to use, they're, they're able to use that, and we have to add a new sanitary sewer lateral for the BW3's building, and that is going to be installed by the contractor. It's going to be jack and board under Stone Creek, and it'll be a new service. For storm water, we were able to capture everything in storm sewers and catch basins. We're moving everything to the west and putting it into an existing detention basin, which that was designed to handle that volume of water back, you know, in 2006 or whenever, whenever the Stone Creek plan was approved. So, we're trying to, you know, minimize water going over the hillside, because that's detrimental to the slope stability, and we're, not that we're redirecting it, but we're capturing all the water underground and putting it into an existing detention facility.
Mr. Taylor?
I thought I'd be eating chicken legs and drinking a beer there right now.
I thought I'd be with you, yeah.
You have an estimated completion date if we approve this tonight? I mean...
We appreciate your patience in this, and not in our wildest dreams would we have thought that we'd get into a dirt situation like this, but, and we may be over-designing it, kind of belt and suspender situation, given the other walls that are experiencing that. So, this is maybe overkill, but, but it does work. To answer your question, we are working heavy duty to give them their pad by the end of the month, and they need to open up before the end of the year. Football season, all those kind of things. I'm fine with that.
Can you disclose who the tenants in the shops are, or the nature of their business there?
Sure. Depending on the outcome tonight, we will have a phone cell company. It'll be a, it will be not a, not a jobber, but the actual company, as well as Massage Envy. They've been sticking with us for over a year and a half now, so they've been patient with us.
Is there an AT&amp;T store?
It's not AT&amp;T.
No. In Stone Creek?
Yes.
I thought, I thought AT&amp;T had exclusivity in Stone Creek.
Not on this site, and that's how we've been able to take some of the people that were in this site that can go across the whole range and kind of even it out, so there's not going to be any vacancies.
Understood.
Kind of how it worked out, little chess game.
Okay. The soil problems that you're having, I'm just curious, are, are they natural, or are they a result of the development that was done up there in the first place?
Both. We had, it was poor soils, but then we encountered some, a lot of organic that maybe was taken and dumped there in the, in the, I guess, during the big...
I think that came from 375.
Part of that as well. So, when we dug in, I mean, it was, we had big humps out. I mean, already we've taken, I mean, I'd hate to tell you how much money is going into this, but it's, it's one of those situations where we need to finish it, we need to finish it correctly, and not have to ever worry about the whole following.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think, I mean, that's, that's the thing to do, and I hope that we can get it, get it done and get built.
We do, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks for your patience.
Mr. Trokowski?
Either one, doesn't matter. I'm going to start from the left, and then work my way up. At the dumpster, is that still a one-way or a two-way?
It's one-way. So, the truck will come in and turn left and just back in, and then back, back out again. He's not going to circle the building, part of that's for slope stability. And the same thing with the, with the grocery truck. By switching the building, some, two positive things came out of it. They can come in and load on, there's a load on the side of where the outdoor seating is. And the other thing is the outdoor seating is on the street, which gives more of a vibrance to the street. As people come down, they'll see a lot of action going on, and that's what we strive for in a lot of developments, to have some outside seating and people seeing them as opposed to on the other side.
The reason I'm asking is that delivery trucks don't, really doesn't matter, as far as the traffic for the patrons, is that still a one-way or a two-way for cars?
That'd be a one-way.
Because we've got 24 feet all the way up to the dumpster, and then we got 22 that's truncated right there at the...
BW3's wanted an outlet for their customers. They didn't want to have it cut off, the parking lot cut off right where the dumpster is. They wanted them, if all the spaces were full, they wanted them to have some ability to have an outlet to, to circle the building, so they don't have to turn around in the middle of a full parking space. So, it was really driven by the tenant to, to kind of put that connector drive in there or something like that.
Because you're truncating from 25 plus 24, then coming around the corner, you're at 22, just from the curb.
Right, and I, the reason I did that, just because it's not double-stacked parking, so I, the way I...
I was just wondering if it was back to one or two, because it's wide enough to be two, and, but not wide enough to be two by two.
I think the intent is for it to be one-way, but yeah, I understand why you're thinking that, or why you think that with it being 24 feet wide, but, yeah, I think the, the intent was just to provide a release, so that patrons aren't having to navigate in a dead-end parking, parking area.
So, then, in front of the store, you've got 23, 19, 19, 23. What's, what's the reasoning not to make those the legal 24-foot, two-way traffic by not, by truncating those parking stalls to 18 to the minimum allowed parking stall?
Well, there's not enough space to get everything in there from the east to the west. There's, there's not enough space to get all that stuff in there, so something had to give. It either had to be the parking stall length, or it had to be the aisle width, and I thought in the last meeting that we had, when we had the discussion about the parking, parking layout, it was, the, the understanding I got from the commission was that they preferred to have the longer parking stall and a shorter aisle width, is, is what I believe that I got out of the last meeting when we were having that discussion.
Yeah, don't think the parking, where were the handicap last time, Jeff? What side of the building were they?
We had it in the front of the building, on the south side, yeah.
And that was 24 feet last time, right?
The aisle width, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, now we got the handicap on the front of the building again, but we took it down to one foot less than last time. I'm just saying, even with, I'm going to beat the same drum I did last time, even with my small truck, it still takes a while to spin that thing out of the parking space, and then even with 24 feet. But I just wanted to know the reasoning behind not making them the 18, 18, and getting your 24 aisles.
Well, the code is actually 19 feet. For 90-degree parking, it's 19 feet.
Did I read that wrong, Jeff, in here? Isn't it 18? Is it 19? Where did I read 18? Oh, okay, I see what you're, 19, but... Where nine by 18 is required. I guess that's where I went. So, then in front of the shops...
Nine by 19. They're nine by 19 spaces.
Correct, in here.
That's according to the code, right.
I guess I read in here, many of the parking stalls are nine by 16.5, where the nine by 18 is required. Okay. I didn't, I didn't look at the code, so... Then, moving on to the two spaces, maybe more or less of a question for Jeff. How do we control these from, if the business fails, there's no restaurant going in?
Say, say that again.
So, if a business fails in one of these two, how do we control it for a restaurant not to go into this, into these spaces?
So, there would need to be a change-of-use certificate, and at that point, we would look at parking, and parking would be the constraint, you know, because a restaurant, I believe it's 15, 15 spaces per thousand feet.
But the change-of-use would have to go through Hamilton County, or do we have to go, it goes through us as well?
It would go through us, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, a lot of times, people will apply for interior alteration, and then that tips us off that something is, is going on there, and then we say, is the use changing? And then if it is, then we, then we trigger this whole...
Yeah, because the, the way it's happening, all these, all these, you know, places moving from one side of the street to the other side of the street, and something fails in here, and then a restaurant goes in, and then we're non-compliant. So, the 13 feet in front of those, why, why the 13 feet and not make the stalls the 18 or 19 required? What's, what's, what's the reasoning between you having a sidewalk of 13 feet wide in front of those stores?
In front of the BW3 site?
No, in front of the, I'm, I'm on the retail stores now.
Oh.
So, we've got 13-foot wide concrete walks, but we're still having to be 16.5 with an overhang. Obviously, you know, the sidewalk's not going to get truncated down that much, but why still have that 13-foot sidewalk?
Well, originally, when it was restaurants, I think they were going to have outdoor seating out there.
Correct.
And I don't know that we caught that since the restaurant dropped at the sidewalk.
So, technically, you could make those 15, or the 19s, but...
Well, yeah, those are 16 and a half along the front there, because again, in the last meeting, I think there was heartburn with the 16 and a half foot stall being on the five-foot sidewalk, and since it was a, this was a 13-foot sidewalk, I kind of left them at 16 and a half feet.
It was just my curiosity, because I knew that before, it was for the restaurants to have something outside, but it never got changed when it gets to a retail store, so...
Right. I would think, you know, that would be an easy adjustment to make in the field, if they decide to say, hey, we only need an eight-foot sidewalk, or something like that. They would, you know, give the full 19 feet to the, to the parking space, and then they'd cut back on their sidewalk.
On the backside of those buildings, I'm assuming those four doors, only three of them which are concerning, they, they're mainly the exit doors. How is, how's that going to get addressed with Hamilton County, with those doors being right in front of parking spaces that have to overhang into that five-foot section, which would leave about 42 inches left over of that walk? So, how, how do we address that there?
Are you in the back of the shops, is that what you're talking about?
The back of the shops, yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's a gap in there with wheel stops that's going to prevent the cars from pulling right up to the, pulling right up to the building, so there's space in there to open the door and, and exit the building and not, not hit the bumper of a car.
There's something else that I wanted to say, but I can't remember at this point in time.
The one other change that I forgot to mention is, this corner here, is this going to be, is this going to be curbed, or is that painted? At one point, it was painted.
It was at one point, but we...
And now it's curved?
You and I had a discussion about making it a landscape island, and now it's a curved landscape island.
Fantastic.
That should show up on the landscape plan, how it's planted.
I do remember the question. So, we have, we have, we have wheel stops at all the handicaps, but we're not showing any on the other ones. So, are we going to have wheel stops where we can prevent from the car not rolling further than it should be in the other places, or is it just the curb that's going to stop the car on the perimeters?
Yes.
Because there's none, there's none any, there's none in the middle of that, those 19-foot spaces.
That's correct. That's correct.
You're not going to have any in the middle?
Yes, that's, that's correct. There are no wheel stops, there are, there are no wheel stops in the middle or on the perimeter.
And how do we, how do we stop from a car going into the store on the property one store retail on that, what side is that here? I don't see the north there. Is it west? Yeah. So, if there's no wheel stops on that west side, how do we prevent a car going through the sidewalk and into the store, or people walking right there if there's no wheel stops?
That, that sidewalk has a six-inch reveal on it, so the sidewalk is going to act as a curb.
So, it has a, okay.
It's not, it's an integral sidewalk and curb.
Okay.
And that's a full 19-foot stall length, so, you know, there's no reason to, for that car to be, you know, driving all the way up into the, into the sidewalk.
So, you're not showing it, but we do have something to stop the wheel there?
It's a, it's an integrated curb and sidewalk. The sidewalk has a six-inch reveal, I don't know how, how you want me to say it, but...
I understand.
Yeah, yeah, it's got a bear, it acts as a barrier.
It just doesn't say here that there's a six-inch difference between the sidewalk and the, and the asphalt.
Well, you'll see that on the site plan when they submit for their zoning certificate, you'll see the spot elevations that'll show a six-inch differential.
Because right now, it just looks like they're both on the same even plane, just like the 13-foot sidewalk with the, with the, with the asphalt.
I think just because it's a two-foot, or, I don't, can't remember if that's one or two foot, but it's a six-inch elevation difference, and the contour doesn't pick it up.
And on the lighting plan, Jeff, we're, we're waiting for a new photometric plan.
No, we were before. We've got the new photometric plan, and I, last time, this thing was going to look like Great American Ballpark. It was like, it was like, it was like 43, you know, I mean, it was intense. This new lighting plan is, is fantastic. It meets our code, so...
I think that's it?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, the only thing that I, I'd like to go back to this sidewalk in front of the retail shops. I would like for that to be made narrower, and those parking spots be made bigger, longer, because that's like a 13-foot sidewalk.
Yeah, we're, we're willing to reduce that down and, and give the difference to the, to the parking stall length and...
Okay, that, I would like to see that.
Okay.
And my colleagues have covered about everything else, so... Thank you.
All right, well, thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Mrs. Smith, do you have any comments before we vote?
No.
Mr. Taylor?
No.
Or Trokowski?
No, thank you.
Okay. The chair will now...
I move...
Entertain, wait a minute. The chair will now entertain a motion for case DA 2013-05, BWW Shops of Stone Creek, minor amendment to the final development plan.
I move that we approve case DA 2013-05, minor modification of FDP, with three conditions. One, the Shops at Stone Creek building must meet the design standards found in Section 12.11 of the Corrine Township zoning resolution. Number two, that the service doors on the left elevation shall be fully screened from view by dense vegetation. And number three, with the sidewalk in front of the Shops of Stone Creek is reduced from 13 feet to 10 feet, or approximately 10 feet, in order to lengthen the adjacent parking spots to at least 19 feet.
For a second?
Second, that goes in.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the final development plan for ZA 2013-05, BWW Shops of Stone Creek, minor amendment to the final development plan. We have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Smith?
Yeah.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Trokowski?
Yes.
Mr. Westphal?
Aye. Motion carried. We're going to miss you. Next on the, next on the agenda is a public hearing for case number ZA 2014-02 for Evergreen at 7:00 PM. at seven feet five eighty-two Harrison Avenue. A preliminary development plan to allow the continued operation of a landscaping business. Does staff have a presentation?
Yes, so, um, we saw one half of this site last month with the final development plan extension. Uh, last month, we were looking at the, the property that's on the intersection of East Miami River Road and, um, and Harrison. This month, we're looking at the adjacent property parcels that are just east on Harrison. So this parcel has a, has a little piece right here that we looked at last month. This is where we're at today. This is the existing, uh, Forever Green landscaping business. The, the history on this case is, is sort of long, and I can get down into the weeds if you'd like. But the more succinct history is that the property was zoned PDI, and a landscaping company was operating there. The property never received a final development plan, so it got through the preliminary development plan, and then they just started constructing and using the property as a landscaping business. There was enforcement action taken to let them know that they had not finished their zoning, and, um, during that enforcement process, the business went bankrupt. And, um, and so then, uh, it was sort of a moot point. Uh, fast forward into the future, Stony Brook Land, AKA, uh, Forever Green, purchases the property and begins to use the property as a, as a landscaping company. We received a number of complaints related to the, um, the appearance of the, of the property. And when we started to investigate those complaints, we realized the, the sort of zoning mess that we were getting ourselves into. So the remedy to, to this mess is to, um, since it never got a final development plan, and that was many years ago, the preliminary development plan was expired, so they had to start all over again with zoning. And so that's where we're at here. We're starting all over again with zoning. So this evening, we're taking a look at the preliminary development plan, and it's important to note in the preliminary development plan that, um, the PDP addresses building location, uses, density, intensity, yard requirements, and area and frontage requirements. Next chance we get, it will be at final development plan. And the final development plan addresses landscaping, lighting, signage, parking, circulation, and other design considerations. So tonight, with preliminary development plan, we're looking at use and building location, et cetera. So this is a, an aerial image, um, and-
Do you know what year this was?
I, it was somewhat recent. We have, um, a building here, and the applicant can explain what the uses of each of these buildings are. But primarily, a building here that's used as an office. There are bulk bins, equipment storage, several temporary structures on the site currently. And, uh, the proposed project, would, uh, increase the number of, of temporary buildings. My understanding is it would, a very positive thing would be the, the, the property gets paved, and, uh, circulation is addressed, parking and circulation is addressed through these design considerations. But in order to, to approve a preliminary development plan, there are seven criteria. And, um, and I'll just sort of roll through my analysis of those criteria. Whether or not it's consistent with the Coring Township land use and, and comprehensive plans, I believe that if developed appropriately, the project would be in conformance with the comprehensive plan. This, uh, this character area, I think that this use would fit in to this character area. However, the land use plan specifically excludes industrial and retail uses. But because the property has received a zone change in the past to a PDI, I feel like it would, you know, it would be a disservice and unjust, really, to say that, to deny this based on the use. So my recommendation is, is that it does fit into the land use plan. Or at least, because it was given a, a zone change in the past, it should be allowed. The, um, the next criteria is whether or not the proposed use would have a beneficial effect on the community. You know, I believe that the, the use as a landscaping business wouldn't have a, a negative impact. And I believe that the improvements in site design, especially given the context of this, where they've been operating here for a long time, you know, I, I feel like the improvements that are being proposed would be beneficial to the neighborhood, if, if they were actualized. There are no public roads that are proposed, and I believe that internal circulation will be improved with, with the implementation of this plan. Property is located on a county highway, so, um, uh, and, and you know, one thing to note, Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission staff recommended the dedication of right away, but we never heard back from the engineer. So he didn't, they didn't require that. So, um, the, the next piece, next criteria is whether or not minimum common open space areas have been designated. And, uh, this is important, they, they did not dedicate, uh, common open space. So this has to be resolved by designating at least fifteen percent, or it works out to be, I think, a little over a third of an acre, as open space on the property before FDP approval. And that, that has to be recorded as an easement, uh, per our zoning resolution. The sixth criteria is whether or not it's consistent with the zoning resolution. And, um, I believe that implementation of the proposed preliminary development plan with the conditions that we, we're going to talk about would result in a higher quality development than exists today. And finally, whether or not the plan has been transmitted to everyone, all, all appropriate agencies, and it has. So, um, as I reviewed the site plan, um, you know, I recommend approval of the preliminary development plan with, with a number of conditions. And those conditions would be that the common open space is, is properly designated and an easement recorded on the property. That would have to be, that would have, that would include, they would, excuse me, the applicant would have to resubmit a preliminary development plan that would show that open space designation before FDP approval. The second condition would be that the buildings on the site be permanent in nature. I think that one of the reasons why we're in this predicament is that the, uh, the nature, the aesthetics of the temporary buildings, the containers and things like that, were, uh, were, were not acceptable by the, by the neighbors. And, um, and it's, it's basically, uh, temporary buildings on the site shall be regulated by section ten point four of the zoning resolution. The third condition is that outdoor lighting and storage areas meet article twelve of the zoning resolution. Fourth condition would be that, um, the exist, that an existing wooded area in the northeast corner of the property be preserved. And that's because the use right behind it, and I should say, it's, it's less of behind and more of above, because it sits way up on the hill. But the use that's adjacent to it is residential, and there are some very nice houses up there. And so any buffering that we can, uh, we can have or maintain is, is going to be important. The fifth condition would be that all signage shall comply with article twelve point four and article fifteen of the Coring Township zoning resolution. That all, um, that the design of parking areas comply with article thirteen of the Township zoning resolution. The seventh condition would be that parking area landscaping shall be installed in compliance with article four point six of the Coring Township zoning resolution. And those are the conditions, and those are all issues that would be addressed in a final development plan anyway, so. But it just sort of highlights some issues that, that I saw coming down the pike. Thanks.
Does the applicant have a presentation?
Hello, yes, my name is Brian Gubo. I'm with JMA Consultants. And we came on board with Forever Green here just this past winter, and trying to get their use approved and established so that they can continue operating on the same site. Okay, just point that. All right. So what they have right now is two bulk storage bins. One, very visible from the street up in the front. Our proposed plan had that bin moved to the rear next to the other existing bin, with an additional bin next to that. So all the bulk storage and storage containers would be well in the back of the site. As far as the fifteen percent open space, we did not have that shown on the preliminary development plan, and we will show that. It'll actually end up being somewhere around fifteen, sixteen percent. I was running that through today. So that's not going to be an issue at all at this point. The entire parking surface and all driveways will be paved, concrete or asphalt. There will be continuous curbing and/or curb blocks at all points along the way. All stormwater management will be approved, reviewed and approved by Hamilton County Planning and Development. So that will be addressed also. I know there is an existing, I worked on the Hunter's Ridge subdivision years ago. So I know, I'm familiar. There is an issue here with the crossing at Harrison Avenue. So we will not make that any worse than Hamilton County regulations would allow. It actually will probably be better than what it is today, actually, so. All parking spaces will be nineteen by nine standard. The parking calculations that we show, I know Jeff alluded that is a final development plan issue, but it is based on number of employees during peak season. It is not based on use or size of the buildings. On our proposed plan, we also show sixteen, what I refer to as double long parking spaces. That is for your typical landscape truck and trailer parking for non-working hours. Because the way they operate is all the employees come to the site and then leave on those trucks. I do not believe this is, Jeff- Tony, what do you use that front building for? There's no office use in there. Okay, so just the main larger ranch in the back is used for office equipment. And the fifty foot buffer along the Hunter's Ridge, or directly between the Hunter's Ridge and the site, will be, get additional landscaping as per RPC recommendations and township recommendations. All right. Yeah, I'm done. Okay.
Mr. Chakovsky? Mr. Chakovsky?
Can you go to the, we add three more containers to put the equipment in? This is the, this is what's actually what we're holding right now. This is not the proposed.
Correct.
We can change that slide.
Yeah.
We can change that slide, we're, we're seeing that we got three more containers on the other side, and we can put the equipment in.
So what does that container look like? Does it got a roof on it? Does it got a door on it?
It's a container box.
A container box, like a shipping container on ships?
Yes.
I don't see it up there. I don't see the proposed. I got it.
Is that what we're proposing, shipping container?
Right, that's the question. And, um, you know, shipping containers are not, uh, the most aesthetically pleasing option, right? And the other issue is related to temporary buildings. You know, is that a temporary building? I don't know that it is a building, right? So then we're talking about, right? Then we're talking about, it's, then what is it? Then it's outdoor storage, right? So then we would look at, um, our outdoor storage requirements, which would be in article twelve. And we would, and this is something that, you know, yeah, I guess it is a good idea to have this conversation now, because we don't want to get into final development plan.
My mind where those things are in ships. The metal, so.
Thick, thick metal.
I, I, I understand, I'm just, I'm just not so sure that that is an approved building by Hamilton County standards. Or even approved building to store vehicles inside of.
No vehicles going inside of.
Okay, that was my first question, because last time, we were storing vehicles in sheds, right?
No, no vehicles ever.
Actually, if, if we could have you up to the mic so we can, we can get it on record.
I think last time, or it was two months ago, I was, I was led to believe that inside of these temporary sheds, in this area, you were storing equipment. You were concerned about your expensive equipment, and your equipment is somewhere locked door.
Yes, but those are not vehicles.
Okay.
That's a, that's a loader. We have a bobcat, a loader. Yes.
Container is not going to be a building. I'm just throwing this out there, because it's a shipping.
Right. Right.
If we get the corner done, it goes in that building down there. That's the fourth bay of the actual building on the corner.
So that's my other question. This existing building, it was supposed to be an office and a storage area, or a storage place?
The office is in the middle.
So that's the off-
That's the office.
So that building is all office?
That's all office. That's all that that is.
Okay. And then the existing building just to the, just to the right of it down at the bottom?
Uh huh. That actually does have equipment in it. Pressure washers, hand tools, weed whackers, blowers.
Cars, gasoline, stuff in there, those kind of vehicles.
No cars, no gasoline, no bobcats, nothing.
So at this point in time, I'm just, I guess, focusing on shipping containers. Couple, you know, if they're approved by zoning, or even by Hamilton County, you know, then they'll be painted and covered, you know, it's the same up on the hill, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
They're at five sixty there.
Oh, yes.
So there's, then my next question is, I'll rapidly jump stuff out here. So you've got a five sixty contour right in the middle of that existing container, and then you come down to five fifty-six, so, okay. So where does all that water go? Where does all that-
Currently, currently? The left side of the site?
Whatever it's going to do at the end.
At the end?
I don't have a, I don't have a grading, is there a grading claim there?
There's a, I got a site utility grading.
There's a site landscape claim, but-
You should give three or four.
Utility grading plan, but it doesn't show where the, where, how you're managing the water. Because you're going from fifty, you're going from five sixty to fifty five fifty-six. And then you've got fifty-four, that's a, that's a, that's a large slope between five sixty and-
So what I have are catch bases at both driveways.
Okay.
I have catch bases catching this.
Just so everybody sees it over here. So where is the water coming from? Here, around the corner, coming to fifty-six.
Yep.
And then where does it come through?
Either that catch base or that catch base coming down towards there.
Because that's a lot of, between five sixty and five fifty-six, what is this right here? You've got it at what?
Two by two.
Five fifty, okay.
There is five fifty.
Correct, that's what I'm saying, is how, and this is all going to get paved.
Correct, and it will be curb.
Correct. And so all this water coming down here, is this, is that going to be enough for both to slip in, spill this way and this way, and catch all that water? Because if it doesn't, and something gets clogged up here, where does the water go? Down into the street.
Yep, no doubt, true.
Correct, so if one gets clogged up here, this water goes continuing down here. If this gets clogged, it's not a real problem. It's just right here coming down here, all the way down here. So it's not unheard of, probably won't happen. How big is that catch base?
Well, that's two by two. That should have a two by two, right?
Two by two grade. And the pipe is?
Um, for preliminary services, I had a quarter too much, or even in line underground.
Like I said, with a forty-two inch and a two by two, it's probably highly unlikely, with a drop that large and rains like we've had a couple of, a couple of weeks ago.
And if necessary, I mean, that's something public works will get, with the bypass calculations.
Because I wouldn't want that coming out and driving down the street and flooding whatever is down here, or going across the street.
That came up with the Hunter's Ridge driveway. We had to add multiple catch bases right next to one another, just to account for that bypass.
I can see how you're managing it over here. It's just, it's just from here to here, down, because Harrison, I guess.
Harrison does flow down.
Flow down. Because I, I mean, sometimes you create solutions and create problems. That's it, so we're gonna, we're gonna address the drainage issue.
Yeah, that will be.
How about lighting? We don't have a light, I mean-
That'll happen in final development plan, and I don't believe that outdoor lighting is proposed. There's all existing lighting.
It's all existing. They did, right there. Because we've got hotspots at point ninety-eight.
Point ninety?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Point ninety, point ninety-eight with sixty-six. And that's right by the bins, which, the thing that I'm concerned about is that, how tall these hip finish are we, and how much, how long they're stay on overnight, because you've got the residents to pick up the, the top end. Now, obviously, lights are going to be down, and then shining down, but obviously, they're going to push some light upward.
Sure.
So-
Are they cutoff fixtures?
Plan should, you know, time to address how much, how tall, what kind of like the shoes, and then type of, what kind of ball boots and the lamp.
Yeah.
And what the pitch camps are, mainly up in this area, because it is a lot higher, it's closer to, to the residents in the back.
And, and if, and whether or not they're cutoff fixtures, that would be-
Right now, they're, they're more spotlight style fixtures.
So maybe a cutoff would be something that, look into.
Yeah.
Keep that in mind for your-
Yes.
So the only thing that really kind of raises my eyebrows is just basically-
not a building, and you're storing stuff, it's outdoor storage, is what this is. So it has to, my recommendation is to condition your approval tonight on the final development plan complying with the section of zoning resolution that deals with outdoor storage.
I just want to, you're okay with outdoor storage bins for landscape materials?
Correct. How long?
Uh...
So you've got a 40-foot container, you've got a 20-foot container, and there's no way for a human being to get out of there, 40 feet in the opposite direction. And in order for it to be considered a building, obviously there's codes, exit doors, things of that nature. A 40-foot corridor is a dead end corridor in some places. So then you've got a container, that's a small container. So that's my only concern right now. So, I mean, if it passes through Hamilton County, that's there.
We just need to make sure that it's clear what the intended use of that container is.
Mr. Taylor?
Just for the record, I've said this before, but for full disclosure, Forever Green plows my driveway in the wintertime, so just want that to be known. It has no impact on my decisions here. But I don't really think I have many questions. I think that the staff recommendation is pretty clear. I would prefer not to see any storage containers. I'd like to see a different alternative for a place to store your equipment that's more permanent. But I don't know how that plays into your business plan or your other plans. And I wasn't here last month to see the ideas down at the corner. If you're saying, if that happens, that addresses a lot of these issues of equipment storage, then maybe that's the solution. But I don't know what the timeframe on all that is. I would just take all that into account. The main reason we're having this meeting is so you guys don't waste your time and come back in a month or two with your final plan and still have a bunch of open issues so that we can't approve it. So we're trying to bring all these things out so that you can address them and come back and make sure all these boxes are checked, so that your final development plan does address all of these issues. That's all for now. Thank you.
Mrs. Smith?
I want a clarification as to whether you're going to have the retail store still, or is that, has that changed?
No, it's not changed.
Okay, so the parking and the traffic, so how does that stand to address?
Mr. Stevenson, could you use the microphone? Thank you.
Okay. The retail store is completely separate from this in particular company. It's two totally different companies. The retail corner, the retail center will be on the corner a lot, completely separate from this. This is the landscape company that we're talking about tonight. And our lawyers have made sure, painstakingly sure, that we make sure that we keep them completely separate. So that way they can deal with it wherever they need to deal with it later. But they've said make sure that we keep it completely separate. That's why I was here last month with that in particular company, and I'm here this month with this in particular company.
They don't want them anywhere?
No, they are completely separate. Completely separate. The only, the only thing that is common is the ownership. That's it.
I got one more question then. So how are we separating the two?
Well, the zoning on the two are different. And so here we have this nether world of zoning doesn't really exist, because it's got an expired PDP. On the other site, you've got, you now have, after last month, you now have a final development plan on a planned business development.
Two more things. Are we complying with the impervious ratio? Because there's a lot of asphalt over there.
There's a lot of impervious. Yeah, I didn't see an ISR on this one. And that would be something that I'd look at in the parking.
Okay.
When I look at parking.
Is that on there? We missed it? And then are containers a lot cheaper than just putting up a pole barn to store your equipment in?
When we moved into the site, we literally, I did it within three days.
I understand.
And so with the amount of money which that's in my pocketbook now, I'd rather take the money and put it on the corner. This is up and running. This is already functionable. This is working for us. And, you know, later on down the road, once, you know, the money comes back in, we would like to take the containers and make them in the buildings also. If, Mr. Scott will remember, I think, when we first came in from here with the original plan, everything was under house. All the trucks, everything was in the buildings, the whole nine yards. And they would not approve us because we didn't, we couldn't tell them that we would do it in a year. So they said, no, they wouldn't, they wouldn't allow it. They wouldn't approve us.
I was here for that, yep.
I can't tell you. I'm a little old fashioned. But I kind of make my money, and then I spend it.
I understand.
I'm not one of these kind of people that go out there and take a large amount of loans out and pray that I'll be able to pay it back. It kills me to have the loan on the land as it is. So I want, I want to take it slow, and I want to do it right. I think it's going to be the best thing down there, once we get done with this. I know the corner is going to be better than anything in that whole entire area. And I think this is just a continuation of that. And we will be back into you later on down the road, if everything goes according to plan, to change the containers into buildings. Because we would rather have buildings ourself. We don't even really want them on this site. We would like to tear down the house on East Miami River Road and put all of our stuff over there. And that was the original, I think you can remember that. But we had big pole barns over, and that was one of the major things that everyone was complaining about, is that we were putting those big pole barns over on East Miami River Road, and they didn't want to see that. But we wanted to see that to get everything in-house. So you wouldn't have our trucks, you wouldn't have our trailers, you wouldn't have anything at all outside. It was all enclosed. But we can't give you a timeframe on that. So the commission said, only bring us what you want to do now. And that's it. Well, my pocketbook says, the only thing I want to do now is the corner. And you guys are forcing us to do this. This isn't even something that we want to do at this point. Your administrative staff gave us a cease and exist, or whatever, letter last fall, and made us come in to do this.
Law.
We can fight about that. Because we haven't actually changed the use of it since before you adopted your resolutions in 2006? Okay. So anyways, we're here now. This is, we're trying to operate, we've been operating for three years. We're trying to make sure that, basically, we just want to be left alone.
I understand.
So if this is what you guys want, or do it, just, you know, let us continue operating, let us try to make our money, let us give 49 individuals an opportunity...
I understand.
...in Coring Township to have a job.
I'm just, all I'm asking is, is it cheaper to put containers in right now?
Yes.
Just buying?
The containers are already there. Pole barns are $100,000 apiece.
Okay. Just so you know, I sit on your side in my professional world. So I get karma, and my butt is bitten every time I'm on this side and on the other side. So I'm not against you. I'm just saying, for the purpose of the view from the street and from above and all these folks, I mean, seeing a container, to me personally, it's like a junkyard.
I'd say come down, take a look at me.
I mean, if I can pull it plainly, it's like a junkyard. So if you're going to put a container in there, I'm just visually looking at the...
I would say come down and take a look at me.
Let's stop this. There's no reason for this. Okay? We're wasting time.
All right.
I do, I can assure you that if you do what we request, not force, and that you comply with the law, you will have no problems at all. But we have laws that we all have to live by, and that includes you and your landscaping. And we're requesting you do this. All we're doing is telling you, you don't do it, you can't be in business. We're not forcing you to do anything. You have choices.
I have one more question too. What one of your neighbors knew by saying, unslightly looking, the whole bit, how does your neighbor feel about the prime day?
The only neighbor that I know that has even complained about us is the, I can't remember the guy's name, Billy Steele, or whatever his name is. Is he's the only one that I know that's complained? I know the drive-through right across the street from us wants to see us to stay. Matter of fact, they came over all worried when y'all sent them the letter saying that we were having the zoning committee. And they were like, you know, hey, if you need us to come and talk, then we're coming to talk on your behalf. And so, I mean, none of my neighbors, to my knowledge, have ever actually complained. I mean, I have a cemetery, I'm sure they're not complaining. I know the drive-through and the storage people, they're not complaining. I talked to them. You know, the only one that I know of that has actually complained is Mr., I can't remember his name, but he's, he's two, three miles down the road from me.
Say the drainage downhill's not a problem, right?
The drainage downhill? It's already there. I mean, we're not changing grade. We're not...
You're increasing impervious surface, though.
Yes.
But it'll be addressed by the...
Yes, and we're going to catch all that water that's on our surface. So I don't see a problem with it at all.
The neighbors aren't worried about it?
Huh?
Neighbors aren't worried about the...
No. My neighbors like me. It's just the people down the street that don't.
To reiterate what Mr. Westfall said, I mean, what we're trying to do is to help you and to protect you. If you follow our recommendations, then nobody really can complain. They can complain, but they don't have, they don't have any feet to stand on, because you've met all of the requirements that we've put forth. And so that kind of protects you, you know? And that's kind of why we're here. So if we let every business just kind of go off and do what they wanted to do, that wouldn't be good. And so that's why we do have some guidelines and some rules, and they're all governed by the state statutes as well. So that's all we're trying to do. And as Mr. Westfall said, we're not trying to force anything on you, but we all got to live by the rules that we have, and sometimes we don't like them. But I want to see you stay. You do a great job for me personally in the wintertime. And I will say, one thing you've got going for you down there is where you're sitting, you can't see the containers from the road, I don't believe.
No, you cannot.
You really don't see much of any of it. So that's, I think, a good thing for you.
Not only that, but we have went through and we have painted them all, we've lined them up. It actually looks like a building.
You quit landscaping along Harrison, I know, yeah.
It does look like a building. If you drive by Harrison Avenue, if you see them, it looks like a building.
I just want to see you understand that we're not against you. I mean, I don't want you to go, I don't think any of us...
No, we are all pro-business growth. We want businesses to come in, believe me, we do. But they have, we want orderly growth. We just don't want willy-nilly growth. It has to be orderly. That's why we have rules, and that's why we enforce them. And that's it. We're not against you.
Okay.
We don't hate you. Okay, is that, we all done? Okay, the chair would entertain a motion to, we have to have public hearing, don't we?
Yes.
The chair would entertain a motion to open a public hearing segment of the final...
They're moved.
We have a second?
I'll second.
They're moving and seconded that we open the public, or we open the...
Public hearing?
Public hearing. Forcing of this. All in favor, we don't want that roll call due, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Is there anybody that would like to address the commission? None so apparent. The chair would entertain a motion to close the public address system, portion of the public hearing.
They're moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Since we moved and seconded that we close the public hearing portion of it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Okay. The commission, Mr. Truskowski, do you have anything?
I do not.
Mrs. Smith? Mr. Taylor?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The chair would, excuse me, the chair would entertain a motion that we accept case, that we approve KCA 2014-02 Forever Green, 7582 Harrison Avenue, preliminary development plan to allow continued operation of existing landscape business.
With the conditions?
With the conditions that are...
In the staff report.
So moved, or, yes, so moved.
Do we have a second? They're moving and seconded that we accept, we accept KCA 2014-02 Forever Green, 7582